Here everyone, I'm gonna go ahead and um we need to order before I do the prelude, I want to ask everyone to pause for a moment. Thank you. Again, our board meeting is under the provisions of the executive order number sixteen and votes uh be done electronically in this meeting is necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare in light of COVID-19. And that any board meeting scheduled during effective date of the order will be held electronically. Uh that should be noted in our minutes. In addition to that, we actually will actually uh have approvals with that order in addition to an approval to suspend the board policies one point four zero zero uh through one point four zero seven. We are practicing social distancing and as a prerequisite uh of that order, we must have the public involved through streaming. We thank JEA in West Tennessee for assisting us with that process. Next, I want to make sure that everybody's uh is on uh with voice vote a call please. Kevin Alexander?
I hear.
Wayne Arnold? Wayne? Doris Black?
Here.
Jim Campbell? Jim Campbell? Carol Carter, S T's McRite? Carol? No, she's here, she's in the building. Janice Hampton?
Present.
A.J. Massey?
Here.
Shannon Stewart?
Here.
Thank you, let me go back. Wayne Arnold, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks Wayne.
I'm here Kate.
Okay, thank you. Jim Campbell, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Uh with that next one, I was in the approvals, the first approval, we have to approve through um board action of vote. It is approved uh of the Jackson Madison County School System Board to meet under the provisions of executive order number sixteen. The board will vote uh that the electronic meeting is necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare in light of COVID-19, COVID-19, and that any board meeting scheduled during the effective date of the order will be held electronically. Well, I'll need a motion to approve that.
So move Mr. Chairman.
And a motion by Carol Carter, S T's McRite?
Second.
Second, Janice Hampton? Any questions? All in uh uh voice vote, Kevin Alexander?
Yes.
Wayne Arnold?
Yes.
Doris Black?
Yes.
Jim Campbell?
Yes.
Carol Carter?
Yes.
Janice Hampton?
Yes.
A.J. Massey?
Yes.
Shannon Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you. Next approval, uh what we we need to vote to spend board policies one point four zero zero and one point four zero seven to the extent that the policies are inconsistent with the executive order, with the suspension to continue until the expiration of the executive order. Next, we get motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion was by Wayne Arnold? Second by Doris Black. All in favor of voice vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh next, uh approval is approval of constant agenda? And motion?
I move. And agenda.
Uh Kevin?
Wayne made the motion, now second.
Wayne and Kevin second? Thank you, thank you. Voice vote Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Next approval of April board meeting agenda, the motion?
I make a motion, we approve.
Shannon, motion? Doris second?
That was Janet.
Pardon?
That was Janet second.
Janet second, thank you. Okay, voice approval, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
Doris?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
Wayne's no. Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is financial reports, we had those uh covered in our uh work session. So if you have any questions uh concerning those, feel free to contact Holly, Karen. In addition to that, um you know Jim is planning a budget committee meeting, so that will be forthcoming. Uh next on the agenda, action items, uh Jackson Madison County Volunteer Recognition Awards. Each one of us see received a packet with uh nomination by uh the school uh school leaders. Do we have any discussions on any um one that you would like to recommend?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Barbara Smith from Lincoln Elementary School.
Is it Barbara Smith?
Yes, I believe that's her name. Yes.
There Barbara Smith, this Janice Hampton? Any other nominations?
Uh Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um I would like to nominate uh Mr. Barry Cooper, who was um from the Parkway Learning Center. I think technically he and his staff at Jacoah were both nominated. I'm sorry, I said the Parkway Learning Center, the Best Academy.
Best Academy, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, Barbara, go here.
I'd like to nominate, I think I am pronouncing this correctly, Sayyan Lomas, um J C M Early College High. This will be the very first one.
Okay, Early College High, okay, uh Carol Carter, S T's. Okay, any other nominations? So we have Lincoln, uh Best Academy, and Early College High. Okay. Voice vote. Kevin?
Best Academy.
Wayne?
Barry Cooper, Best Academy.
Doris?
Lincoln.
Lincoln? Barbara Smith. Jim?
Early College High.
Carol?
Early College High. Sayyan Lomas.
Janice?
Lincoln.
A.J.?
Uh Barry Cooper.
Shannon?
Uh the Best Academy Barry Cooper.
Hey. Now I'll go Early College High, so what's the numbers? Best Academy. Best Academy is best is five votes, so they are the winner. To be submitted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I I would just like to point out that I appreciate all our volunteers in the meeting, they're always it was hard to vote just for one, but I just wanted to make to point that out. I think we all feel that way.
I second that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um uh next on the agenda, approval of fees for before and after school. They probably also discussed those uh fees and those numbers, I think uh Superintendent Washington and Dr. Williams explained those uh to us. So do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Janice motion, Kevin second? Voice vote Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Shannon?
I said yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Okay, you good?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Uh next on the agenda, uh special course codes for Madison. And those uh I think was two, two additional uh courses that uh presented to us. Any questions about those, are we ready to act on that?
Could you go over the specific courses that were added?
Yes, yes ma'am. Um Madison have taught these in the past, but um periodically we have to update it with the state. It is intermediate communications two, speech and communications two, and speech and communications three. And these are used by the students that are on the debate and forensics program. So uh these two communications courses are are part of a bigger program of their debate and forensics programs. And they just have to be submitted to the state, re-submitted to the state periodically. They already teach them.
I move, we accept the specific uh course codes as presented.
Second.
The motion by Wayne, second, was that you Shannon?
No, it's Carol.
Carol, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we have motion and second. Uh Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon? Shannon? Did we lose her?
Yes, I'm here. My, for some reason my microphone keeps going on and off.
Okay.
That might be for a purpose.
You go, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And the motion is approved. Okay, next on the agenda, uh selection of superintendent. With that, we have three finals. If you remember those. Dr. Marlon King. Dr. Rodrick Richmond. And Dr. Ron Wood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend this search until a future time, but it's appropriate.
Second.
Uh well, well actually, I that, I don't believe that can happen because we've already approved the agenda. And we've approved number E on action items, we've approved for the selection of a superintendent.
That's correct. Yep.
That, yeah, that's not owned up.
Okay, I I spent a remember the past two years, there've been many motions that went on the agenda that were uh entertained, and I'd like this to be as well.
I move we suspend the rules to uh have that removed.
Good job, Mr. Arnold.
Uh we have to have uh what, three quarters uh vote to suspend the rules? Is that correct?
Two thirds.
I believe that's
Two thirds.
Yes.
Yeah, we have two thirds, two thirds, we have six. Okay. We're gonna need a motion to suspend the rules, we have uh we need two thirds votes, which would be six. Uh Kevin?
No.
Wayne?
Yes.
Doris?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
No.
Janice?
No.
A.J.?
Yes.
Shannon?
No.
I vote no. Okay, with the uh with that, smooth with the selection of superintendent. Um of course, like all of our votes uh tonight, it could be voice vote. And again, let me name those three finals again, Dr. Marlon King, Dr. Rodrick Richmond, and Dr. Ron Wood. Okay. Kevin?
Uh Dr. King.
Kevin's Dr. King. Wayne?
Pass.
Wayne, pass? Doris?
Dr. King.
Doris, Dr. King. Jim?
Pass.
Jim, pass? Carol?
Dr. Marlon King.
Carol, Dr. King. Janice?
Dr. Marlon King.
Janice, Dr. King. A.J.?
Pass.
A.J. pass. Shannon?
Dr. Rodrick Richmond.
Shannon, Dr. Rodrick Richmond. And I vote for Dr. Marlon King. Those are his numbers, Janice? Now five votes for Dr. Marlon King. One vote for Dr. Rodrick Richmond. Three pass. So Dr. King is enjoyed to vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh two quick comments.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I obviously have concerns about moving forward, but uh I do respect the will of the board and my intention would be to do everything possible to make Dr. King successful. Uh to that point, my second comment, I would request that as a part of your uh contract negotiations, that you schedule a meeting with the entire board and Dr. King for the purpose of letting us all have a frank discussion on expectations. Both Dr. King's expectations of the board and our expectation of Dr. King. And and Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that also you get with Dale and see after we've done that, if it's possible to incorporate those expectations into his contract. And I'm I'm looking ahead at the possibility for substantially different board next year. And I think if we did those things, we would go uh a long ways towards uh helping ensure Dr. King's longevity in this position. Uh it's
Okay, okay. I don't have any problems there, any other board uh comments?
I just agree with Jim, I I think that is a very proactive way in order to um counter the contract because we have to be very transparent, you know, and um doing this uh particular contract so that everyone would know uh the expectations of the superintendent and and the requirements thereof. So I just do agree with Jim.
Any comments?
Thank you Jim for bringing that up because that is totally necessary.
Okay, but Mr. Chairman, my my only concern is that we've had tremendous turnover in this position historically. And I again, I very respectfully request the board to consider this because I think it would go a long way towards towards his longevity in the position.
I have reservations, um I guess, I I didn't hear anybody speaking, so I suppose I'm speaking uh interned, is that correct? I have reservations.
Uh Carol, you can
Yes, I have, I have some reservations concerning that. Uh I heard Jim say that he would like for the board members to sit down and have a have a just I guess a comfortable conversation with Mr. King, Dr. King, uh letting him share with us his intentions and what we expect the system to look like in a certain number of years. I don't have a problem with that because we should have expectations of how we want our our system, our school system to look. But I think I I I would kind of hesitate, I do hesitate on on putting um in the contract I think I hear what uh Jim is saying. So I I don't know if that would look more like our, we were trying to micromanage him, I I I don't want to get into that.
No, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 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 Jim.
I I appreciate Carol uh asking for clarification because no, that was not my intent to have him outline what he thinks this district's gonna look like. I'm just talking about basic expectations of the board superintendent relationships. Frankly, we've done this every every time with a new superintendent. What's different here is I'm suggesting we do it on the front end and incorporate it into his contract. Typically, we do this within a month of a new superintendent coming in. Uh and it's uh the the TS BA has a template for doing this and they recommend doing it. My suggestion is only, the only thing different is I'm suggesting we do it on the front end and if possible, let our chairman get with Dale to incorporate it so into the contract. So that if we have a new board, if we have a substantially new board come in, that we have those expectations both sides locked in. I I I'm gonna tell you in all, in in all sincerity, I'm just trying to do something to get some longevity into this position of the superintendent. But uh in in Carol, yeah, I appreciate you asking for clarification. I'm not suggesting we ask him to come in and outline what he's gonna do and get that captured in a contract. I'm just talking about basic board superintendent relations and expectations and how we're gonna work together. And when, and again, we do it every, we we've done it every time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are you rec, Mr. Chairman, you recognizing me?
Hey, hey Kevin, before you, before you speak, let me, let me go back, this backs track, I want to make sure that uh before we start at the uh vote, I want to make sure that we get a motion and a second that we um formalize the election of the superintendent.
What did you say, uh Pete?
I want to make sure we have a motion and a second that we actually formalize the vote for the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman?
For the, for the, yes.
I I make the motion that uh that the board gives you the authority to negotiate a contract along with Dale, with Dr. King.
I second.
That was Carol and Doris.
Before we, before we act on on that motion, um Kevin, we need a vote on the selection of the superintendent first.
I'm confused Pete, what what do you mean?
We did the vote, we did a, we actually, actually had the uh vote, but I, we didn't have a motion to proceed with the vote.
Oh, well I make a motion that we proceed with the vote.
I second.
We got a motion? Shannon? And second by Carol?
Yes. Yes.
What's the motion?
I'm thoroughly confused, what's the motion?
The motion is that we proceed with the vote for superintendent and to certify that we voted for Dr. Marlon King to be our superintendent.
Exactly.
So that that didn't happen?
No, we voted, okay, y'all let me speak real quick as the parliamentarian, and 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 Pete, I was trying to get in, I couldn't get in. Um we, we have to make a motion to approve his election as our superintendent. We each individually voted or passed, and Dr. Marlon King was elected our superintendent. So after that, we have to make a motion saying we vote that, we vote we make a motion that Dr. Marlon King be elected our superintendent, which we did by vote, but we have to formalize it by making a motion. Pete, am I saying that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
I I don't want to rebut with you, I don't recall having done that uh before I did sit through one uh superintendent's election.
I would like to defer to Chairman Johnson and also Attorney Thomas on this. As the parliamentarian, I feel like this is proper procedure.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I'm gonna go ahead and second the motion, okay, I'll do that.
Oh, good, okay.
I'm still saying, I'm still saying this is very unfamiliar to me as I sat through one selection or election of a superintendent before. So I just wanted to clear that up as well. So I mean, if we keep the ball rolling, I I um I I move that we do that.
We second it, right? We got a motion in a second. Dale, do we need to clear up anything else?
And Pete, I just, just
All right, I think what we did not do is there was not a motion on the floor when we voted. And what we need is a motion on the floor.
And that is my fault, I was trying to get in to speak, but I couldn't. I was trying to say that out loud, that we need to make a motion to vote.
So this, this cures
So, this, this cures that issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move.
Okay, thank you. Well, that, actually, the, uh, the motion that Shannon made.
I made it, Miss Carol, you seconded it.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Okay.
Voice vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
I guess as a formality, I'll stick with my pass.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you for clearing that up. Back to, uh, uh, Jim's, um, suggestion and the discussion, uh, I think it's, uh, well, um, a well-thought process that we can, uh, establish. And when he mentioned the fact that we want longevity, uh, I think that's important. Not just for the school, but it's important to the system and our children, which is our number one priority. It should always be our number one priority. But with that, um, I'll raise that unless someone disagrees. Uh, if we need to vote on that, um, we need a motion that I set up a meeting, we discussed that with the board, board, board meeting with, uh, Dr. King, so we can incorporate any expectations in, uh, his contract.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm asking, is that?
I, I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Second.
May I, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
I guess I just want to double check with Attorney Thomas the legality of us putting those expectations into his contract. I assume we, you know, can se, we can. The issue is those expectations are actually outlined in our policies as far as I know, what board expectations are, what board responsibilities are, what superintendent responsibilities are, and board and superintendent relations, you know, there's policy stating those things. I just wanted to make sure before we, you know, move forward with this and give you the authority to negotiate that with him, that that's even legal. Can we do that? I mean, I guess we can put whatever we want in the contract, but.
That's fine, Shannon. Yeah.
Um, we have.
So, I guess, I guess, Pete, I just want to check with Dale on that.
Let's do that. Dale?
May I speak?
Yes, Doris.
Um, with, you know, I don't think that we, uh, authorized to put something unnecessarily on him or in the contract, but there is, and I don't know how many of you have taken it, we've taken from TS, uh, be a board superintendent relationship. And so, there are, as you said, policies that we could go by, and I think that would be the best thing for us to do. And I have the, uh, booklet, so if anyone would care to see it, uh, I'll share.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Janice?
If I may, um, I have to agree with Shannon with this because of the fact that, uh, a contract is anything that's binding between, uh, the board, the superintendent, or any other entity that you're having agreement with. And just because the policies are listed, you know, as policies, does not mean that those particular policies, uh, well, I ain't going to say those policies, or just an agreement having some of those, um, policy requirements in the contract. It does not make it board. Um, um, I remember very vividly, um, four superintendents that did something in similarity to this. And, uh, and there was no problem at hand, and I don't see why there is a problem at this point in time. I feel like there is no micromanagement in regards to this, but what it does, it just, uh, makes the contract clear and concise of the expectations of the board as well as the superintendent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim?
Uh, I, again, I want to be clear, there were two parts to what I was recommending. One, have the sit down. And, and we do that with every superintendent. The second part was to have you e- e- engage with Dale to explore the possibility of putting it in the contract. It may or may not, to Shannon's point, it may or may not be practical. It may or may not be reasonable. We'll say to the extent we can get something official that this is what, what our expectations are, I still say it goes a long way towards ensuring the new superintendent's longevity. But there were two parts to what I was suggesting. One was a sit down, the second was for you to work with Dale just to explore the possibility of putting it in the contract. May or may not work.
Okay. Um, you what, do we need, um, I think Kevin, I think I was, uh, going to make a motion that, um, to move, we move forward, I move forward with, uh, Dale, with, uh, um, the contract with, uh, Dr. King. And with that, uh, I totally agree. I think we need, um, a sit down, um, for board. Um, and just, um, talk about our system and some of the things that, um, uh, questions we may want to ask him, uh, as a new superintendent. So, Jim, we get, I get a motion that, um, I proceed, uh, with the negotiation contract with Dale.
So, we made this already?
Well, I, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think Jim's already got a motion and a second on the table, does he not?
I think so.
We, we've got to deal with that first, I believe, before we deal with my motion.
No, it wasn't a motion and a second.
No, no, and.
We, we just discussed.
I, I made, I made the, uh, we, we've already voted on that one.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, my bad. I, I'm sorry, my, my mistake.
Okay. Okay, can we get, um, a motion so I can proceed with Dale, contract, Dr. King?
Second.
Who's the motion?
Janice motioned.
Uh, it's motion Janice, second. Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin got a motion and a second. Voice vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
Wait, we, we've got to go back because we did not vote on that other. There was no opportunity for discussion. That Kevin is correct. There was no vote on the previous motion and second. Because I really wanted to point out that, uh, we can't sit down and meet with, uh, Dr. King for a while now. I'm working fourteen hours a day dealing with the, the consequences of people foolishly running off, traveling, meeting together. Uh, we did not have this discussion yet. We didn't have that vote. Kevin's correct.
Wayne?
That hadn't happened yet.
Who made, who made the motion? Who made the second? I didn't hear it. What, what, what was the motion and what was the second? What was the motion?
Doesn't the secretary, can she tell you that?
What was the motion then? Okay, good. Okay. Did y'all, uh, hear, uh, Janice?
No, I didn't, I didn't hear her.
Okay, this, this is what, I'm telling you what she said, let me clear it up. She said she think Jim got confused and made a motion, but there was not a second.
Well, I second it.
Second, what, second, wait, 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 wait. We can't, we've already passed that. There was a motion, but it was not a second. So, we've already passed that. We already, I had another, uh, conversation and a vote. So, you can't go back. Uh, Doris should do that.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, the vote, the, the, uh, motion on the floor. It's for me to, uh, give me the opportunity, um, to work with Dale on the contract with Dr. King. That's the motion and, and the second we have on the floor. I need a voice vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Wayne?
I guess.
Doris?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Shannon? Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, for some reason, my microphone keeps going out.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved. Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, uh, any committee reports? None? A superintendent's report?
Well, yeah, thank you. I'd like to start off by just thanking a whole host of people, uh, during this time, these last few weeks. Um, I got to start with Ms. Allison Pyron and the nutrition staff. Uh, we've served over thirty-nine thousand seven hundred meals during this time. And the contribution of, um, volunteers, both in-house through central office, schools, community partners, school board members have jumped in. Uh, really appreciate all that support. Um, couldn't do without you, um, RIFA and many other agencies. We, we, we meet weekly to accomplish this and make sure that we get in all aspects of the community that need to be gotten to. And we continue to update our, um, our locations and how we continue to try to service the community. Uh, Dr. Chandler in Transportation has pitched in, uh, with some bus stops and helping coordinate some of these community meetings. And that and Dr. Williams has kept us up on some of the CDC standards and things that we, we need, need to be paying attention to. I know Dale, myself, and Dr. Green have had a lesson in labor law as we try to pay everybody that we can and take care of our people. And Dr. Maclan, the academic team, helped to organize the, uh, educational resources that we're trying to get out to our students along with our principals, teachers, and other staff members. Ms. Tompkins has kept us in line with our sped students and special needs students to make sure we didn't get out of line. I really appreciate her input and help. And Holly Lysy and Rachel Lebo Scott, uh, with keeping the communication channel open via our website, media releases, and all these other things. So, I really appreciate all that. Our maintenance staff has been doing some worthy projects during this time, and so have our bus mechanics. I was at the bus garage earlier this week, and we saw kind of activity out there that may not have been able to take place if we were in school. So, we are using that time wisely. Um, uh, Holly in Fiscal Services continues to keep us neat straight on how we got to spend money, and we wouldn't be here without the IT group. So, thank you, Ashley, and your group for making all these arrangements to get us all connected, um, as we continue, uh, to get better at this process, which I think probably will continue, even though Ms. Janet doesn't want it to continue, it'll probably continue this way for a couple of months. But anyway, thanks to everybody in the district participating in this effort. Um, I know many people in the community appreciate it. Of course, there'll be criticism by some who says it should be done a different way, but we continue to map out and do things the best that we can with the resources that we have, all right? So, that's really all I have tonight. Thanks to all of you for the board's support during this time, this unusual time. And, uh, we just continue to march until the, until the end, whatever that, whenever, wh- whenever, and whatever that might look like. So, thanks again to everyone.
Thanks, um, Superintendent Washington. Uh, next, let's, ladies of contacts, if you have any of those, make sure you get those to, uh, uh, Secretary, uh, Janet. Um, you have a list of board information, uh, on your agenda. Next, uh, John, turn with a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. I don't think we need a voice vote on that.
Probably not.
All right. Thank you all. I want to do the same. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Washington for leading us to, uh, up through this term of time. I want to thank JEA, Western DC, and our tech guys, and you never know how, uh, much you need those guys until you get in situations like these. We appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right.